Welcome to the council dinner. Normally, we don't have a crowd, but welcome. If there's a bite to eat, please enjoy yourself. I believe, Mr. Caldwell, I was told you're going to start us off. Is that right?
Yeah.
All right. If not, make it up as you make your way to the podium. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I'm going to do a brief introduction and turn it over to the experts because I'm far from an expert. So, thank you all for taking the time today and hear more about the growth policy plan and amendments. As you are aware, the growth policy process is complicated. A little history of how we got here. After an attempt to amend the plan in 2019, we listened to feedback and began the process in creating our first comprehensive land use and transportation plan, and reconvening the growth policy committee was the first step. We proposed an amendment based on the data gathered from the comprehensive plan. The committee reconvened in October and held its final meeting in January. There were four public meetings, and many of the people here were in attendance. We heard from presidents and members of all bodies requesting additional changes to the proposal. We carefully considered their request, made a few edits, and presented a final amendment, which was approved at the January 10 meeting. There are members from the leadership team here today to give a presentation and answer any questions you may have regarding the plan and the amendment, and we would appreciate your support and help in moving this plan forward. And I'm going to turn it over now to our presenting people.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Ms. Brooks.
Okay, so I'm going to start off. We want to start off talking about our plans and how they relate to each other. So, we're going to start off talking about the growth policy plan, which is really why we're here, what it does and doesn't do, and put it into context with the other tools that we have to consider, land use and future growth and development in the county. So, this is one of three documents that we'll touch on. Like I mentioned, I want to start by talking about the purpose of the plan, which to establish three areas. That's okay. Urban growth, planned growth, and rural. Of all the documents that we're going to go over, this one is the most general. And so, when it pops back up, this will make more sense. But so, reading this map does not tell us that everything in yellow that you see is going to be suburban residential, or that every parcel in the rural area is a farm. What it does tell us that the areas in yellow... There it goes. I'll pause for just a minute so you all can see the map. There we go. Okay, here we go. Thank you. So, what it does tell us that those areas in yellow have been identified as places that future growth could be accommodated over the next 20 years. Next slide. And we're going to talk about what the growth policy does not do.
Director Brooks, can I interrupt just real quick? Can we back up for a quick second? Because just making sure we all understand, the growth policy plan was initiated in 2001, but maybe, I know we're going to get into, hey, we've got this urban growth area, we got the, you know, planned growth area, the rural growth area. But what was the reason that the state required the localities to go into, to produce these growth policy plans in 2001? I think that might help us as we're kind of putting this whole thing together.
Well, public chapter 1101 was initiated in actually 1998. There was concern over, well, there was a number of different concerns. One, I think, that's talked about most frequently and is the most predominant, is unchecked annexations that were happening. But also, to think about the rapid growth at the time, I think the statistics that's quoted is Tennessee was 13th in population growth at that time, and sprawl was a concern. And so, those are just some of the reasons that it was brought up.
So, you know, was it part of looking at, you know, how do, we've got a lot of, we've got unincorporated county, we've got city, we've got town of Farragut, all in the same place. And so, obviously, as one part of that develops, it affects others. So, was it kind of to promote smart growth in a sense?
And encourage jurisdictions to coordinate with each other.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay, I think I was here. Yeah. So, what does it not do? It doesn't rezone someone's property. It does not dictate development. But like I said a minute ago, it does identify places where future growth could go in years to come, and it doesn't make someone use their property differently, or make them sell their property. If someone is farming on their property right now, that process does not change that. So, I want to touch on the comprehensive plan, or general plan as it's called currently. The purpose of the plan is to provide recommendations for land use and transportation. It outlines policies and guidance on how future growth in the unincorporated county can be accommodated. Again, I want to make sure that you all know this is couched in an advanced NOx process. It was the county's initiative to update land use, transportation in the unincorporated areas. So, the creation of this plan is really how we got started. The process has taken place over the last two-plus years. It's involved a lot of data analysis of where and how the county could accommodate growth, and it's received, we've received input from thousands of community members. So, this helps us go from the general question of where can growth be accommodated, that we are answering to the growth policy plan, to what types of uses are appropriate in these different areas. This is the point where we can begin to understand where and what scale residential development might occur, or where a commercial center might be more appropriate. And it is important to note that there are places with rural character found throughout the county, not just in these rural areas. So, again, when you look at this map, you're able to see much more nuance and can identify what places, even those within the planned growth area that are anticipated to remain more rural in character, and which areas are more appropriate for traditional-style development, suburban development, and where we might see more intense uses. Those are things that you can't determine just by looking at the growth policy map, but can be understand, but can to understand through the comprehensive plan. Next slide. I want to emphasize that the comprehensive plan map, which we refer to as the future land use map, or the FLUM, was created first, and that all the input that I mentioned that we've received over the last two-plus years, we took all that, and then the team took these growth policy boundaries and brought them into alignment with the map. And finally, we have the zoning ordinance and map. This document takes the recommendations from the comprehensive plan and defines what is legally allowed at the parcel level. It is the most detailed and defined tool that we have. But I want to be clear, right now, what we're talking about is not the zoning code. This document will have to be updated if the county's comprehensive land use and transportation plan is adopted. And we know that both the separation and coordination among these three documents can be confusing, as Chris mentioned, but it's really important to note that they're all closely linked and built upon each other. And this slide is just to recap what I just went over at a very high level, what the growth policy plan is. It determines rural, planned growth, and urban growth areas. The comprehensive plan gets into more detail, provides land use and transportation policies and action steps, and then the zoning ordinance regulates land uses at the parcel level. And now, I'm going to turn it over to county, the county's director of engineering and public works, Jim Stone, to review the proposed amendments to the growth policy plan and discuss next steps.
Good evening, everybody. I don't get the chance to visit with you like Amy does on a monthly basis, so it's nice to, nice to be here. As Amy said, I'm Jim Stone, director of engineering and public works for Knox County. My role in this process, just a little higher background, is the things, the recommendations that come out of planning commission are enforced by my department. So, that's the kind of role that engineering and public works plays, much like Tom Claybo in the city. I wanted to go through just generally what we have proposed as text amendments and map amendments, and kind of, and kind of how we got there. Generally, on the text amendments, we wanted to provide a lot more clarity and specifics. Obviously, that plan was generated in 2001, lots changed since then. So, a couple of the things as we went through that plan was the existing development on steep slopes was codified for only certain zones and certain slopes of greater than 25%. This particular text amendment here codifies it such that rezoning on slopes shall be based on the adopted policies of each legislative body. So, that's regardless of zone and regardless of the steepness of the slope. So, the recommendations that come out of Amy's body in regard to density as it relates to steep slopes will be forwarded to the county commission body. Next slide, please. Once again, a little, just a little more specifics here. In the 2000 plan, the allowed zones were ag, state, open space, roadway, and planned residential. In the new plan, as proposed for your all's consideration, we have three different place types. These place types really kind of hopefully align more of the rural feel. I think you have a handout of those place types, rural conservation, rural crossroads, and rural living. It's our hope with those that we, as those rural places do develop, they develop in a fashion that respects the rural character. Next slide, please. This, a lot of words here. Try to, this, this is particularly, just kind of breaks down into where we want to see development occur in the rural area currently, and that's on the next slide, but I'll kind of preempt that a little bit, is currently, the growth policy plan says that you can have up to two dwelling units an acre in the rural area, but you can go up to three if you have adequate sewer and establish that the roadway infrastructure from the rural area to the growth, planned growth area is adequate. We wanted to put some additional restrictions on that. That's one of the things that we felt like we heard throughout the process. So, we have capped that now at two dwelling units an acre. And the, in addition to obtain that two dwelling units an acre, you have to have sewer service or the ability to install a private sewer service that then will be maintained by a public utility, as well as an additional restriction such that the road must be 18 feet wide, or be brought to 18 feet wide, and on a major, or a major or minor collector or above. Like I said, that's something we're really excited about in the sense of that it will align our commitment to have growth where adequate infrastructure exists. That's one of the things we heard a lot about. I kind of jumped ahead a little bit on that next slide, so we can actually jump to the next. Yeah. This is essentially, as it affected the day of this plan, all previously approved densities in rural area shall remain in effect. Essentially, what that says, it's just, we're grandfathered your zone. Obviously, we didn't want to take away any existing property rights that folks may have. So, if you're in the county now in the rural area and you're zoned at PR3, obviously, you wouldn't obtain that PR3 in today's times if this plan's adopted, but you would retain that, that zoning and that density and that property right. The next obvious part of that is the growth policy map. We, and Amy's kind of, I think, showed that map previously, but we want to talk a little bit about why we, why we did what we did, and where we chose to grow, and really try to do it in a very objective manner. The property increase, or pardon me, not the property increase, sorry. The increase of the planned growth area that you'll see on the next slide is a 7% increase. So, the planned growth areas established in the 2000 plan, and the plan we're proposing to you today is a 7% increase in land mass area. Those expansion areas, obviously, we considered very carefully. We wanted to make sure that they aligned with the either existing or proposed infrastructure, including schools, water and sewer, and roadway, because that's, we all know those three things drive land development throughout the, throughout the community. So, we wanted to be very sure of that, and we had, you know, folks, we had actually technical committees that met multiple times with just those folks, you know, the utility managers, Tom Claybo, Harold Cannon, those folks, and just really made sure that, that those things aligned closely. Another thing we wanted to do was also be very fiscally responsible. That's one of the things that Mayor Jacobs wanted to be. And the fiscal analysis that we did as part of this plan showed that we looked at varying scenarios. And the scenario that we ultimately ended up choosing, we felt like aligned these priorities, but it also gave us the ability to, in the status quo, we were essentially losing money every year. It took, the cost of service was revenue negative. And under this scenario, we actually have a go-to-a-positive net increase of about $2 million versus a $4 million loss, so a $6 million net increase to the county taxpayer. So, with that, the, the map that you see here is the proposed map that will be considered by all legislative bodies. We grew the planned growth area in five specific areas. Two of those relatively small, so we won't necessarily highlight those, but we'd be happy to share a little more detail with you. One of those is on Straw Plains Pike, pretty much right adjacent to the city boundary there at the FBI station. The other, or the TBI station, the other location is in Karnes at Oak Ridge Highway at the Karnes Sports Park. Those are very small locations. The, the three large locations that we expanded were along, the first one was along Chapman Highway. Obviously, if you drove out Chapman Highway in a while, this particular corridor is under construction now by TDOT. It's four-lane with, you know, really no shoulders, just kind of narrow lanes, no turn lane. So, the state is building a center turn lane through here, adding just a lot of improvements in the area, in addition to some utility expansion that's ongoing out there, too. So, we did make an expansion here to align with that improved roadway infrastructure and utility infrastructure upgrades. The, obviously, the second one is, everybody's very familiar with the growth at Hardin Valley. This is one that, to be honest with you, we probably a little bit, you know, reactive on this one, but we do have plans in place to widen Hardin Valley Road. We do have plans in place to partner with TDOT to expand the intersection, interchange of Watt Road at I-40, and expand Everett Road into the, into the west side of that community. West Knox Utility District has recently upgraded their sewer plant, so there's just a ton of capacity out there in that community. So, we do want to expand there, but you'll notice that expansion only goes a certain distance off of that main roadway. We still wanted to protect those rural environments out on the lake. So, once again, that was, you know, very thoughtfully done to make sure that those rural places were preserved. And the last map amendment we're proposing is kind of in the, in the Rida community. If you know where the Rida Elementary School is, this is generally in that vicinity. You know, obviously, I think you guys later on today are going to consider some expenditures of city funds for the expansion of Washington Pike. That's a project we looked at. We also looked at the redundancy in the transportation network through this area gives us a lot of options. You have Tassel Pike, Washington Pike, Millertown Pike, Rutledge Pike, as well as a lot of roads running north and south like McGinnis and Roberts. So, we are embarking on a transportation study for this community, because unlike the Hardin Valley community, before we were proposing this growth, we want to have a transportation plan in place to implement projects before, you know, the problem persists. So, this is something that you'll see in our capital plans coming up the next, you know, this year and the next following years, that you'll see projects. Yes, council lady?
Look at that. What are the bounds for your transportation study that you're talking about there?
It will be, it will include everything within the, the expanded boundaries here, as well as just pretty much the entire 8th Commission district. If anything, we'll, we'll look at a lot of different intersections that may even be outside this area from a safety perspective. But this particular expansion will focus directly on the capacity of the roadway network within this, within this expansion.
Okay. Thank you.
Just staying on transportation, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Back, you know, related to Chapman Highway and all of these, where there are state highways, how is this aligned, is this aligned with the TDOT's most recent 10-year plan? How does that sync or not?
Um, well, there, we, we did, there was some, there was some conversations about the 10-year plan. There were some projects that were pulled out, so there is some concern there that we're working with TDOT on. I ain't going to say that there, you know, there's not major concern, but there are some things that the state did as part of that plan that we want to revisit, you know, and they're going to update it yearly. But, but yes, there's, I would say it aligns with it, but obviously, it's still an ongoing conversation.
Are there areas of growth here that are contingent upon the 10-year plan?
I wouldn't say so. We have, most of the projects that we are contemplating, or the projects that we contemplated with this, were already projects that were either underway, like Chapman Highway, or some other areas like that. So, we didn't feel like that the release of that 10-year plan would create undue stress on any of these areas.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir.
Director Snowden, while we're on the subject of traffic and road improvements, does this proposal remove engineering studies from future growth?
No, sir. We still, we still will work with the current standards that, much like you guys work with, anything that generates more than 700 trips will receive a Level 1 traffic study.
I thought that it removed traffic impact analysis from extended growth in rural areas.
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah. There is a comment there, Councilperson Roberto. We, we did, that goes back to that old, and I don't know if we can go back to that particular slide. It was the slide, I think, I skipped, Mandy, where it talks about the growth. Yeah. In this particular location, you received two dwelling units an acre somewhat by right in the growth policy plan, and of 2000. And then, you could get that additional one dwelling unit an acre if you did a traffic study. So, seeing as how we backed the traffic, or the, the density back to two, we did remove the requirement for the traffic study for that, because we're not giving them that extra lot, lot density, so to speak.
So, when you're looking at future road improvements or traffic in the rural area, you don't have to do a traffic study?
That is correct. And we, the reason we did that was because we reduced the density to the point that we feel like that that shouldn't, that shouldn't create a concern.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you, sir. Sorry, Mandy, I made you jump back there. My apologies. And I think we're to the last slide, which is our next steps. Obviously, we presented this information to county commission last evening. Certainly glad to present it to you guys tonight. We are going to do something similar, I think, with town. And then, county commission will consider this at their regular meeting in the end of this month, in February. It's our hope to get this in front of your body for consideration if, if county commission does approve that in, on March 5. And then, the Board of Aldermen will consider it at the end of March. So, we, once again, just appreciate your all's input, support, and be happy to answer any questions you may have, or provide any additional assistance.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to my colleagues for additional questions.
Okay, this, I don't know who this is for, but as a former person that sat on the Board of Education, how, schools always come last. Was that, I know you said you consulted with them, and how that kind of factors in, because you're building a school before the child is even born, for an elementary school. And that's typically where most of the growth comes, is as we move out, it's younger families a lot of times, and then there's the need for the elementary school. How, how does that play into this? I mean, that's just a broad hypothetical question. And, and what kind of, will this, will this improve the county and the Board of Education's coordination for funding the building of a new school in plenty of time?
We, and I'll, I'll jump in, and some of my colleagues may want to add to that, but I think it will. One of the things that we've seen under Superintendent Risewick's leadership is their new chief operating officer, Garfield Adams, and I meet quarterly to talk about these transportation projects there, because obviously, we had one a while back in Hardin Valley community where it was, it was an enforced situation where they sited a school without really consulting us. And, and so, I think this, this particular administration is much more agreeable to that, and Garfield has committed, and we do meet quarterly to discuss those things. So, hopefully, there will be some improvement with that, ma'am.
Thank you. It's also financial, because it's a big tax expense to build a new school. And that, that would be more my concern, is that we budget appropriately for that type of infrastructure as well.
And they were, you know, much like we said, those utilities and engineers were on those subcommittees, the, the school system was also on there, and one of the things that we asked them was to look at these maps of planned growth and make sure that the schools that were zoned within those areas had the capacity, or had the potential for that capacity.
Or could at least have room for portables.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Director Snowden, I had a follow-up question for you. I wanted to go back on the discussion we were having about hillside, ridge top. Currently, hillside, ridge top protection is only mandatory, is not mandatory outside the city. It's only mandatory in the city. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And in the discussion we had, and you showed some text amendments early in the screens, what I remember seeing is that there was amendments to the growth policy plan, removing language about hillside, hillside and slope protection. It looked like, and I just want you to correct me if I'm wrong, but it looked to me like you removed the language about rezoning on slopes of 25% or more shall be limited to, and then it goes on and talks more about specifics. So, you, it looked to me like you're removing that language and replacing it with rezoning of slopes shall be based on the adopted policies of each legislative body. Did I get that correct?
I believe that's correct. Are we, are we? Yes, I wanted to verify, because oftentimes, I'm up here speaking, but the, the good folks back here are doing a lot of the work, so I just wanted to confirm that.
I absolutely understand that. I mean, this is a large document, so I, you know, I appreciate you guys coming and talking to us about this again, and giving the level of detail, because I know when we've had these discussions before, it was early on, as you were kind of looking at, how do we plan this, who are we going to talk to? So, no, I do appreciate it. I just, that, that's an important thing, I think, for, from council's perspective, because we had done a lot of work on hillside and ridge top, and so, I just wanted to better understand what you were doing there. But the, the county has not passed any kind of mandatory hillside protection?
We have not, sir.
Okay, so, the language about adopted policies of each legislative body, there is no, there is no hillside protection?
It serves as an advisory role. Amy's group make recommendations on the density based on that, and those recommendations were forwarded to county commission, but you're exactly right, they, they can be amended at, at that body.
Okay.
In addition to that, although it's not adopted by county commission, if you look at the comprehensive plan, which will, you know, that was in the document that informed this planning process, we actually created a new rural place type, which is in your handout, called rural conservation. So, the rural conservation place type, we have actually placed on areas of significant hilltops, ridge side, ridge sides? Ridge? For some reason, I always get that wrong.
Ridge top.
Yeah, ridges, yeah. So, we consciously located those areas and placed that place type on them. So, what that does is actually encourage clustered development. So, although, you know, very similar to hillside, ridge top protection, where you're, you know, clustering density in areas that have less environmental constraints. In addition, this also allows us to acknowledge the fact that the hillside ridge top protection plan is in place in the city of Knoxville.
Well, and there's several documents that we're dealing with here. And so, just for clarity, the proposal that we're looking at, and the council will eventually vote on, will take Knox County out of the Knoxville-Knox County general plan that is dated 2033. Is that right?
Yeah.
That is correct. So, the, the comprehensive plan is just for the unincorporated areas of Knox County, so that will apply there.
And then, when we were just hearing from the previous speaker, a reference to the comprehensive plan, city council will have no vote on the city, on, on the comprehensive plan. That's the county only, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll ask one more question, unless my colleagues have one to add. Either for Director Snowden or Mr. Caldwell, just out of curiosity, I think one of the reasons you mentioned updating the plan, you're both excited about whatever questions came up. One of the comments you made was around operating overall development at a loss, and that this change would allow for a more financially stable footing. Is it tied to an index? Is it tied to an index of any kind in order to keep up with inflation or other things? Or is this a, an iterative thing that is only done as needed over the course of a decade
And, and I don't know if I, I can answer that specifically. It's more about the type of development as regard to the, the place types that were assigned in those, in those grids, so, but we can get, we can get, follow up with our financial consultant that did that, Nittagrit was their name, they did a fiscal analysis, certainly don't want to give you bad information or anything, but yeah, we, we can follow up and get you a more specific answer on that, sir.
But that did hear, you're right, that one of the, one of the goals of this is to get more, get development more financially on the positive side than operating at, at a loss.
Correct. And, and obviously, you know, the goal, too, is to reduce that sprawl and, you know, have more, you know, condensed development to where we can ultimately serve those customers better.
Okay.
Mr. Snowden, I think I already know the answer to the question that I'm going to ask. Back to the traffic study. The northern part of my district has some serious issues, Wash Pike, Millertown, Broadway, Tazewell. And you mentioned doing a traffic study. Does, and I will say, there was a traffic study for that, those areas of my district, Fourth District, Fountain City over to Wash Pike, in the city, of course, it doesn't pertain to you. And COVID squashed that, and we had to go with a scaled-back budget, and it was removed, because I think data really helps drive planning for traffic projects. So you talked about doing some study areas, or to do an area up there in the expansion area. Do you ever do anything in tandem with the city and in that, you know, like, I'm assuming, like, the way it's been done in the city when we've done it in the past in my time on council is we approve a consultant and we pay an outside firm to do that. Is that the same way that you would do it as well?
It, it would be. We're, we're working with the firm right now, CDM Smith, to kind of hone that scope. CDM Smith, actually, you guys are probably well familiar, is a very, very good traffic team, and I'd be happy to, to work with Tom and his group and hopefully maybe use an economy of scale to, you know, bring in some of that, you know, city data, because you're right, I mean, that's, we want to be as objective as we can with this, and, and so I, I don't care a bit if you'd like me to work with Tom and see if there's a...
If you could get him to put it in the budget, that'd be great.
I'll, I'll ask him about it. Me and him talked about Washington Pike earlier this week, so certainly, I'll, you know, I'll make that offer and see if there's any options for them to participate.
Yeah, and I think my areas of concern right this moment are more Jackspur and Tazewell, and so I didn't know how much you were looking at, but I just wondered if we'd done anything jointly. I didn't know if TPO looked at those kind of things, but we have some major issues up there and lots of growth, and, yeah.
Sure, yeah, we, we've done those things in the past and certainly be willing to do it now, so.
All right, well, I will let him know in our next meeting that you've committed.
Director Snowden, so you keep trying to leave, and I, I keep, I keep bringing you back.
Can you get Amy up here? I think Amy's better to answer these questions.
Well, Ed, you know, we'll, I'll offer it up to whoever, whoever, whoever wants to answer. So in a conversation we, you and I started with, we talked about density and considerations, and you mentioned that in the rural growth area, it was two units per acre, if I remember correctly, I may have said that wrong, but there was consideration for that. In the other two areas, which would be urban growth and planned growth, is there any consideration to density there?
There, and this, this may be a, a better Amy question, but I'll, I'll, I'll give it a shot. Really, for us, we're going more towards really the, the form of what fits on that particular site rather than, Amy doesn't like the word density. I love it personally, but no, but that, I, I think we, we want to focus more in those areas about, you know, what, what appropriate form of the building will fit within that land mass rather than focusing on just a specific number, is that?
Is that the place type? Is that what you're talking about, where you're referencing place type instead of density?
Correct.
Okay. But so then it would be correct that there's no consideration for density in urban growth or planned growth areas, only in rural area, growth area?
Better. That's getting out of my wheelhouse.
I can speak briefly to that. So currently, I mean, we still have the county zoning ordinance, and it is very focused on density. So the planned residential zone is similar to the city's old RP, the zones, which relies on density. So at least for the next couple of years, obviously, like I mentioned, the regulations, what you can do on your property is driven by the zoning code.
Okay, but the document itself doesn't reference density at all?
The, the growth policy plan, it does for the rural areas.
It does for the rural areas.
But not for the planned growth areas.
But not for the other two.
Correct.
And then you rent, you mentioned, I think, did you mention planned residential in the county?
Yes, that's a, that's a zone that's used in the county.
And, but we don't have that in the city.
Correct. We do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn. Thank you, members of the county and planning staff who took time out of your evening to come present this. I believe council will vote on this matter first on March 5th, paid attention correctly to the presentation, so we'll probably see all of you again then. Just a reminder for council, we're going to roll over to the large assembly room and get a group photo, so. Terry Knott, yeah, maybe five-minute break.